Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen. Good morning, Kirk.
Good morning.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of April 11, 2023. We'll start with the consent agenda.
Approval of payroll, March 31, 2023. Approval of claims, March 30, 2023. Approval of minutes, March 14, 2023.
We don't need a motion for that, do we, Scott?
Yes.
We do.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Commissioners, an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund, number 4933, for the Porter County Community Foundation, Porter County Historical Site Preservation Fund, first reading.
Can you, what is, I don't know what this is about.
We have a fund over at the Porter County Community Foundation for historical site preservation, and we really haven't been taking off any, any of the 5% annually, so...
I was surprised you heard that, too.
So, we're just going to start doing that. It's a little under $5,000 this year.
Rather than let it build?
Well, we can, we can actually be using it right now, so actually taking advantage of it.
Okay. Do we have a plan for it?
Well, I mean, we can talk about it once we get it over here. So, I'm hoping that we can use it for a couple of the different projects that we have in place, but obviously, we'll have to vote on that later.
Do we take it, do we, I don't know how it works for sure. Does it come out like on a certain date, or can we take it out later when we get projects figured out?
You have to actually make a decision by the end of March to take it out, and then the check actually arrives sometime in April.
So, we haven't made this decision yet, so is this for next year?
Well, actually, one of the things that we know we need to do in the sheriff's residence is to fix the stairway going up to the attic so that we can get some of the original doors out. That could be one of the things that could use...
Oh, I got that, but you said the end of the March, and it's April, so...
No, we already, we already, we already asked for them to send the check. We just need to have a fund for it to...
Who asked? You guys? I mean, I don't, this is the first I'm seeing this.
Mm-hmm.
No, I think...
So, we can just do that without coming to a meeting?
Commissioner Riggs, I think Commissioner Riggs stated that she has asked them to go ahead and move it forward, and what we're doing now is creating the fund in order for that to be completed.
But we haven't voted on how to do this.
So, any of the three of us could call over there, because I know there's some other accounts that have money in it. The MOH has an account, the Animal Shelter has an account, and just say, "We want this changed," without coming to this board. I mean, how does that work?
We've never done it before. We've never asked for the money out of the accounts.
Right. And that's the difference.
So, how should it work? I mean, is this how we do it? We just ask for the money and then...
Well, they, they reached out to us and told us the money was available.
They do every year.
Right. Well, they did. And because we were doing, we were planning on doing some work there in the old sheriff's residence, Barb had thought, because she's been leading that, that project, had thought we could be used for that purpose this year.
Okay. Well, I would just appreciate being in the loop. I think it should go through a meeting. We're going to be...
Well, that's what we're doing now.
After the fact.
Well, none of the money's been spent.
I know.
All we're doing is, this, the purpose of this is to create the fund for the...
I know, I know.
So, we have a, we're creating an ordinance, a non-reverting fund, 4933, for the Porter County Community Foundation, Porter County Historical Site Preservation Fund, first reading. And Scott, do we have to open that up to the...
We do.
So, we'll close our regular meeting, open up the public portion of it. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this fund? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this fund? One last...
More of an understanding of what it is?
Yeah, you're asking, but what is the money? Okay. Well, Bar...
Like, more of an understanding.
Don, can you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
Just like, more of an understanding, because I...
Okay. So, these are, these are dollars that were set aside at the Porter County Community Foundation to be used for historical site preservation. And we have the ability to take out 5% a year on a smooth basis, so over, you know, the average over 20 quarters, we can pull out 5%. It's, it's a little under $5,000. And because we are in the process of doing some work, potentially at the Memorial Opera House, and potentially at the sheriff's residence, I thought we should start to pull the money out. And so, the only way that we can do that is to put that into a fund, so when that check arrives, it needs to go into a fund. This is not voting on how the money is being spent, it's just creating a fund for the check to go into.
And it can only be spent on historical preservation.
Right. So, what would be for the courthouse? It would be for the Memorial Opera House? It would be for the sheriff's residence?
For all of our historical buildings.
We good? One last call. Anybody would like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anybody like to speak against the ordinance? Second call. Anybody would like to speak against the ordinance? Third and last call. Anybody like to speak against the ordinance? Public portion of the meeting is closed. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance creating a non-reverting fund, 4933, for Porter County Community Foundation, Porter County Historical Site Preservation Fund.
Do you have any more?
No, I just don't like how this was handled. I hope we do it differently in the future.
Okay. Is there a second?
No.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Clerk Jessica Bailey.
Wait, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Full-time security officer for the admin building. I've asked Scott to look, you know, within our funds, and Melanie, to put a full-time security officer in this building, which we've never had. I think it's time. It's money I wish we didn't have to spend, but I think it's just, I think it's a sign of the times, and it's, and it's really, cost-wise, it's priceless if something were to happen here, so... Questions or...
Will this be a single full-time person, or will we have like a couple of part-time people?
There'll be a couple of part-time. They'll be, they'll be employed out of the sheriff's department, out of their court security. They're just an extension of that. But to correct myself, it could very well be primarily a person, and then when that person goes on vacation once a year, or twice a year, whatever it is, I'm sure they'd bring somebody over, move them over for that period of time that they'd have to be off.
So, will the, will the sheriff be managing this, or what?
Yes, the sheriff will be managing. It's an employee out of the sheriff's, sheriff's department, of course, the security section.
Okay. And this will go to the council, right? Because I, isn't, he's asking for more people on the street, too, right? Which is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did ask for this to be on their agenda.
Yes, this will have to go in front of the council. Entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve a full-time security officer for the admin building.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Now, clerk, is Jessica Bailey here? There she is.
And is Daniel here, too?
I asked Jessica to be here to speak about the move of voters' registration over to 157 Franklin. Barb, would you want to...
Can we, yeah, I'll just give an overview. Last year, the health department received a $1 million allocation from the, our funds for their use, and one of the things that they want to do is they want to expand their operation to the back of the building, which means that there, there are two other departments in there, Veterans Administration and the Coroner. And the Coroner, at the same time, is bursting at the seams and doesn't have enough room for everything that they need to store and manage in that space that they have. So, we were attempting to find a location for the Coroner, and then, at the same time, the health department asked if we could also look for a space for Veterans Administration. So, one of the places, and just because of the requirements of the Coroner, we looked at voters' registration, and Jessica has been so kind and cooperative in working with us in looking at a couple of different options as to where we might be able to move them. Can we just first talk about one of the things that we want to do even before we start the moves, and that is the storage of your one piece of equipment over at the Expo Center, and the need for our facilities department to create a closet for that, because that's going to be part of our, our discussion today and getting approval for that?
Yes. Currently, our central count machine, which is our big machine that counts all the absentee...
Could you move your mic a little closer? Thank you.
The DS-850 is our central count machine that counts all of the absentee ballots, both in-person and by mail. And that machine, every time we move it, it's supposed to be a stationary machine. Every time we move it, we all hold our breath a lot, waiting for it to be delivered to the Expo Center, which is where we do all of our election night reporting. So, that's where we actually run the machine. And then, we calibrate it when it gets there with the help of our vendor. And then, when election night's over, we pack it back up, hold our breath while it goes back to its storage. And we get chastised each election by our vendor for the movement of that machine and the recalibrating of it. It takes a lifetime off of the machine every time we have, it has to go.
I assume that wasn't an inexpensive machine?
Yeah, it was upwards of a quarter million dollars.
Yeah.
So, we are hoping that we don't have to move that back to this building after the primary election, and I'd just like to have Daniel talk about what he has, his plan for that machine. And so, that will actually get taken care of in advance of May 3, where we'll store it over at the Expo Center.
Right. Lori Daly and I, the director of the Expo Center, and I looked at some options of that a few weeks ago, came up with one that we like the best, that's right off of their office, a very secure place. The, the storage already exists, really. It's just a matter of changing the doors on it so they're more secure, so they can be locked. And it's got security, security surveillance cameras in the area already, so it should be probably the best option in all ways.
And that is something that your facilities department can handle...
Oh, sure.
...in terms of building that. And we know that we have to have video surveillance on that, and you're, and you're prepared to be able to handle that as well.
Yes.
The other issue that we had at our last 10 o'clock commissioners' meeting was, we were under the assumption that early voting was going to have to move to 157 Franklin along with voters' registration. And Jessica, can you just explain why we don't have to do that here in Valverde, so...
No. One of the early vote sites has to be at a clerk's office, and that is done at North County.
In Portage.
In Portage.
So, that requirement is handled, so we don't have to worry about dealing with that here. So, early voting will still remain in the admins center, just as it always has been. Now, at that last meeting, we also were hoping, but it turns out that that's an aggressive schedule, we were hoping that we were going to be able to move voters' registration during their quiet period, starting on May 3 for 10 days, because they can't touch ballots. But in terms of having everything ready for them to move over, that schedule is not going to work in this case. And now, we're hoping to do that during the county fair period, where you have a number of people that will be staffing the booth over at the, at the county fair.
Yeah. At the county fair, we have a booth every year, and the majority of our staff, staffs our booth while it's there, so we have a skeleton crew inside the actual office. So, if we move during the 10 days of the fair, it's still a 10-day schedule, it's just bumped enough, and then, construction will be finalized, and we won't have to work through construction, because that's not ideal for the office staff.
Makes sense.
And can I just say that today, I would like to get approval for Daniel and Jessica to work together to lay out the space, both on the first level for their office space, as well as the lower level for storage of the equipment. And can I just turn that over to Daniel? We don't have it finalized down to the nth degree, but these are just some of the conversations that we've been having so far, leading up to approval today at the commissioners' meeting.
Yes. So, the, the first floor has a significant increase in square footage over their existing place for the offices, voters' registration. But there's some adjustments we would like to make before moving them in, that way we don't have to try to work in the space while they're there. So, that's the reason for the July thing. And there's, we're first meeting this afternoon with a contractor to see what that's doable, but I think it is. Then, the downstairs storage is basically, I think we've heard that there's an issue with the current location of the storage equipment at the admin building, where the temperature and humidity isn't quite ideal. And so, this, this makes an improvement on that. It's a tight space. We need to make some room down there, but I believe we can, and make it better for them than they have here as well to store down there.
So, you, you need a, a motion to...
I, I would like to move that our board approve that Daniel take the next step in terms of laying out the requirements in the space for the move of voters' registration and the election department over to 157 Franklin.
I'll second for discussion. Just continue to, to keep us, all three of us, up to date as to what, what's going on.
I've asked Daniel that they come back and they just report at our next, on the May 9 meeting.
I have a question. Is the election board involved in this? Have they approved this move, and what are their thoughts?
We haven't really discussed it in a meeting at all. I can, we have an upcoming meeting.
I'd like to hear what the election board has to say before I am in favor of this.
So, the election board dictate where you're, you're operating out of?
Not historically.
Only government does stuff like that.
I just want to know what their thoughts are. I didn't want them to make the decision. I don't want to make a decision before I hear their thoughts.
Well, she's the only, the only elected person on that body. She answers to the public. Nobody on that election board does. I'll second your motion.
The election board is made up of members from the public.
They're not elected. I'll second your motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Jessica. Porter Stark, Matthew Burden, presentation on mobile crisis work and turnover.
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, thank you for having us here today.
Thank you for being here.
It's good to see you, and, and I just actually want to start first by introducing Sandy Carlson, who has actually been with Porter Stark for a while, they say, as our vice president of clinical services, just to help fill in any of the gaps if there's questions on some of the clinical services. But I just want to start really quickly by commending all of you. You've all been to Porter Stark to visit, to talk with us, to ask tough questions, and make our system better, so I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to start at least by saying that none of this could be possible without the grants we've received, including the ARPA funds. And you've been a big champion of that, Commissioner Biggs, and all of you have been very supportive. And I wanted to make the point that not only are those funds helpful in developing all of the infrastructure for what we have to do to carry out these services, but when we apply for other grants, we get to say that the county supported us in this effort by doing this. We're one of four mobile crisis grants in the state. We're one of 12 current CCBHC grants, which we'll get into a little bit. And it looks like we're in good shape to also receive a crisis stabilization unit grant from the state. So, all of this is over $10 million worth of support over the next four years to make sure that we're staffed to the level to do the things that we can do. So, with that, and I do have some extra printed copies if anyone needs them. I don't know if you do, but I'm happy to give those to you either before or after.
Is that what's in front of us on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the press or the public may want some.
Okay. Definitely. All right. But with that, we'll go ahead and to the first slide. So, this is a little bit of a mouthful of an acronym, is CCBHC. And I want to talk about it briefly, because if you've been following the state legislature, Senate Bill 1 is focused on three numbers, which are 988, and five letters, which are CCBHC. So, the first question is, what exactly is that? It stands for Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinics. This is a national framework for treatment, to have something that's comparable in every single state in the Union, as opposed to each state having a CMHC system that's unique. Now, the good news is that Indiana's 24 community mental health centers are well-positioned to all become CCBHC, and Porter Stark is already on that way, because we've had a grant in the past, we've got a current grant, and to develop many of the services within that, there are additional grants, including the ARPA funds that are supporting the infrastructure for that. Where you'll see the biggest difference, if you want to click, from what we have today is on the, the crisis continuum, and Sandy will be talking about that a bit. But if we can go to the next slide. First, I just wanted to tell you, and again, this is a lot to summarize, there's 68 pages worth of 115 criteria to become a CCBHC. So, we did a self-evaluation to see where we stand in this. It looks like we're fully met, or substantially met, on the vast majority of the types of services, the organizational capacity, the hiring capacity. Where we need the most development, and where there's historically been not permanent support at the state level, has been in the area of, of crisis services, and that's what we're gearing up to do. We currently have a staff of 330 employees, and we have psychiatrists, nurse practitioners, nurses, clinical staff of all sorts that are there. I wanted to go to the next slide, if we could, real quickly, just to show you the growth trends over the past 10 years in terms of our workforce. So, you can see a little over 200 employees 10 years ago, up to 330 today. That's over on the left side. On the right, you'll see what we're up against as an industry. So, that gray line at the top shows turnover, the percentage turnover within our industry in the state. We get benchmarking results every single year. So, you can see, this is a difficult field. I know that turnover and retention of staff is a challenge everywhere, but historically, it's been tough for us. And when you look at that trend going up and up in the picture, it shows you that it's harder and harder to keep people in this field. It doesn't always pay the best. It's, it's subject to burnout, but you can see our results. We've managed to beat those results consistently every year, and even through the pandemic, when turnover was some of the worst, we were able to beat those state benchmarks. What I'm most excited about, and what I shared when Barb visited recently, was that our most recent results show that we actually saw a significant drop in turnover. And I truly believe that's because of the ARPA funds, and because of the grants that we've received, that are letting us support staff at, at a more competitive level. So, again, thank you for that. If we can go to the next slide? Oh, and we didn't have our state benchmarking yet, so I hope for the best for them as well, but it'll be surprising if they see that big of a drop. Just really quickly, so when will CCBHC happen in Indiana? Right now, we're on track to be fully implemented by 2027. Again, good news for us is that we have grant funding that's going to cover most of this here at Porter Stark Services for the next four years, all the way up through at least the beginning of 2027, hopefully.
Excuse me. What does a CCBHC stand for?
Yep. So, that's that Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. And that's that mouthful of an acronym that's really, I wish that they would have come up with a better way to say it. Unfortunately, that's what we have to work with, so I, I try to just repeat it and repeat it and repeat it.
I still have to remember what it says, and I've been working with it for years now, so...
Yeah. So, it really, you can think of it as kind of the modern CMHC, the Community Mental Health Center, and the, and the treatment system for that. But there are a lot of moving parts to that. The good news is the state is on board. There's a lot of things that need to be done statutorily for that to happen permanently that are in progress and moving well through Senate Bill 1 at this point. Next slide. Again, is this some sort of fad? We don't think so. You can see an orange there. That's every state in the Union, almost, that has something to do in developing this treatment infrastructure, this CCBHC infrastructure. So, that's why Indiana is on that path, and actually, ahead of a lot of other states at this point. So, we're excited for that. I'll move on to the next slide. How will this impact care by Porter Stark Services? As I mentioned, the key thing is going to be around crisis care. Right now, we have our psychiatric hospital, which is an inpatient unit. Typically, a length of stay there is around three to five days, and it's for very acute situations. You can be admitted immediately with medical clearance, and that's going to continue. But what we'd like are a couple of other services that are in the CCBHC framework. One of them is mobile crisis, and the other is crisis stabilization, or what we're going to call our crisis center. And so, Sandy's going to talk about a bit of each, of where we're at with both mobile crisis and the crisis center.
So, we're in the process, in fact, right before this meeting, I was on a mobile crisis call with our other partners in the state. One of four people, our four centers, as Matt described, that are developing mobile crisis teams, and we're working together to create standards across the state so that we're all doing the same thing. So, our mobile crisis team is in process right now, and, next slide, please. And the way that's going to work is that we're going to get calls from, through the 988 center, the emergency line, especially for mental health emergencies and substance use emergencies, and they will come to us, we'll deploy our mobile crisis team out to that event, and, and then process it from there. So, our purpose in that is to try to keep people out of the emergency room when they don't need to go there, and out of jail when they don't need to go there. So, we'll manage them by utilizing our crisis center. So, this is a place that, once we go out to someone's home, for example, or a community center where people, where the crisis is occurring, we can transport people, if necessary, to our crisis center, where we can talk with them further, we can perhaps, we might need to hospitalized them in our hospital, we might need to get them to a med-surg hospital if they have a physical issue, or the police might need to take them if they've committed a crime. But it's a place to triage those things. Sometimes, people just need a little time to cool off. So, in our crisis center, we'll have a space and place for them to sort of get it together. There, there are not beds there, but there are, would be reclining chairs there, and just a place for them to get some food, to have contact with some professionals who can triage the situation and help them move to the next step. So, we're really looking forward to that.
Are you, is that to get them in, potentially medically stable if they're, if they haven't been taking their meds or whatever?
Yeah. So, if they, yeah, if they haven't been taking their meds and they need further observation and care, we could put them in, in the hospital. If they haven't been taking their meds and they just need some consistent attention from a case manager, for example, or get back into connection with their therapist, then we can facilitate that. If they're seeing other providers in the community that are not us, we can make sure we make connections with those other providers to, to try to help them sort of get their feet on the ground again and then move forward. So...
And historically, they would probably end up in the county jail.
Correct. Historically, they wind up in jail, or they wind up in the ER. And right now, we do go to the emergency room and respond when Northwest Health calls us. They don't always call us, and, and, and then, this is an issue for them as well, that they have a lot of people in their emergency room.
Right. They're really not staffed to handle that type of...
Correct. Yeah. That's not, that's not their main purpose.
A lot of times, they don't even hold them long enough to stabilize them or to...
Right.
...get them in touch with the proper resources.
Yeah. And, and that's not their purpose as a med-surg facility, to do that. And so, they do call us for help, and we are happy to go there, and we have a contract to do that with them, but it would really be best for the client, first of all, and then for these other entities, if we could surround them with people who know how to help them and get them on their way. Also, I would like to say that, also just point out that we have space for kids and families in the crisis center that we're establishing, and this is significant, because oftentimes, when it comes time to hospitalized a child or an adolescent, child and adolescent hospitals are few and far between, and, and it's hard sometimes to get kids in, and they have to wait a while while all of that is triaged. And I'm, I'm saying hours, and, and there's, you know, sitting in our waiting room is not a very comfortable space to wait.[1723.66] comfortable space to wait. So we would be able to be, to maintain children and families in a safe space, a comfortable space where we could help them until they can get to where they need to be. So we're really looking forward to this and we just appreciate your support.
Well, that is exciting and it really is cutting edge compared to what we've had.
Yeah.
It's a big difference and Sandy mentioned too, is that whenever you can get the least restrictive level of care and get somebody stabilized, it's better for them and it's less costly. So it's a win-win for the patient, it's a win-win for society.
And we, you know, we try, probably 99% of what we try to do up here, you know, is affects, you know, a positive way, the quality of life and that's exactly what you're all doing, so.
Yeah, that's actually part of our mission. Did you know that?
And I have to say too, the other thing I wanted to mention is things have been very smooth in the transition from one auditor to the next in terms of getting our ARPA funds through. We're already, I think, over halfway done in our progress billings from our construction and getting this going and on track to open the crisis center in the fall. We'll be doing at least a small ribbon cutting, so I hope all of you are able to make that and get a chance to see it.
Oh, you will, definitely.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here.
Sheriff Ballin, Gary, are you here? You're here for the sheriff. We have an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund 9161 for receipt of proceeds from the Adult Community Corrections Grant for the Porter County Jail's second reading. Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Marty. What we need here, Scott?
We need to do, I believe this is second reading, so we just need to do motion of second on second reading.
Motion to approve the ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of proceeds from the Adult Community Corrections Grant for the Porter County Jail on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Ella, Sheriff, we said aye. Parks Department, Jake Nuckaboy. An ordinance creating a non-reverting fund 8166 for receipt of proceeds from the Lake Michigan Coastal Program in the amount of $36,250, first reading. Should you give us the Reader's Digest version of what this is?
Yeah, so this is a grant that, it's a reimbursable grant that we got through the Lake Michigan Coastal Program. And the primary purpose of that is to help fund personnel and supplies for our educational programming and community outreach. So primarily, it's going to go to help updating and improving our parks to schools, our field trips and our camp fund set programs.
Okay. Okay, we'll close the, our regular media open up to the public here. All those. What's that?
No.
Oh, I thought it.
I thought you were getting in and calling a vote. I was getting ready to vote.
No, I learned my lesson. Those who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anybody like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and last call? Just because I'm asking, Don, you don't have to.
No, I mean, I would like to know more about it because what you were saying sounded really good.
Yeah, so I can definitely give some more information on it. So what we did is we applied for.
Jim, you gotta have it for the minutes. She's gotta come up and ask and he's gotta talk into the mic.
Yeah.
Okay, it's on my mind.
Ask the question, state your name, Don.
Oh, Don Miller. So I just wanted, just a little, just explanation because what you were saying sounded really good.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have kind of three primary educational programs that we run through Porter County Parks. There are Parks to Schools where we actually bring programming from our naturalists and our program director.
Jake, please speak. Art, thank you.
So the Parks to Schools program is we actually bring programming, educational, environmental, natural resource, conservation, restoration, programming-based curriculum. That actually matches Indiana State Department of Education curriculum and we bring those programs to the schools in the winter and fall months, so outside of the nice weather that we're getting now. And then we have field trips where schools actually come to the parks and we put on similar types of programming, but more in the actual field. We actually have the first one onsite this morning at 8:45, the first field trip of the season. And then the third one is the camp front set. So that is our youth camp. So that's the elementary, middle school aged camp program that we put on for eight weeks in the summer. And this grant is to help fund the part-time naturalists, the camp counselors, and as well as updating a lot of our equipment and supplies, much of what had become outdated.
Wait a second, you are only getting $36,250. How are you going to do all that?
Yes, so this is, because it's a reimbursable grant that's covering 50% of it. And then I actually did apply for another $37,000 grant through the same program. So I'm hoping we can get on a revolving basis with Lake Michigan Coastal Program.
I just thought you were being thrifty.
So.
She ruined it.
Thank you for that explanation. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you, Don. Third and final call, those speak in favor of the ordinance? Okay, those who would like to speak against the ordinance? Second call, those who, anybody like to speak against the ordinance? Third and final call, anybody like to speak against the ordinance? Close the public session. We'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of proceeds from the Lake Michigan Coastal Program.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Sheila Paul, Director, Porter County Health Department. We have an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund 8195 for receipt of funds from the Indiana Department of Health for the local grant fund, first reading. Aye.
Aye.
Could you tell us a little bit about it?
So just basically the same thing we were here before for the lead grant 8915. We established that fund. Little confusion on our part. We also have to establish an ordinance to go along with that. So no changes in anything, just establishing the ordinance.
What are you going to, what are your plans on using this money for?
So that will go towards part-time staff to help with our lead program. As we mentioned before, the allowable blood levels has dropped per state of Indiana and so just increased testing. We know that we're going to have more children possibly fall within those levels and so they would just require more follow-up, more testing on them. We've already seen an uptick in cases that are in that new range of blood levels and then, so what happens is there's multiple tests that have to be done. So we've got to get them back in the office again for more testing. Previously, we weren't doing much testing in the office. We were just if needed or if asked. Now we are testing every child who is eligible at that age range, so yeah, a little bit more work.
Okay, I'm going to close this meeting and open up the public session. Is there anybody like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, is anybody like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Doesn't seem ridiculous. You should ask maybe twice, right? You gotta ask three times. Third and final call, anybody like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anybody like to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody like to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody like to speak against this ordinance? Close, open it up, entertain a motion.
I move that we create the ordinance, or to approve the ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of funds from the Indiana Department of Health for the lead grant fund.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those in favor, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Expo Senator Lori Daly, Director. Morning.
Good morning.
We have a First Amendment to Management Agreement with Porter County Agricultural Society Annual Payment of Board of Commissioners of $12,000 for Kekiki Valley REMC due to increase in monthly facilities charges. Tell us a little bit about that.
Last year, I received a letter from REMC. Our facilities charge used to be $150 a month. They redid some things on their end and came out and said it's $2,700 a month. So it was quite an increase. I mean, it wasn't just us, it was anybody that has it. So anybody that pulls a lot of electric, Aldi, Morgan Township Schools saw this increase as well. So the reason for it is because of stuff that's put in throughout the years to get, bring more electric to the grounds. So we looked at consumption between us and the fair and it was about 38% was the fair's portion. So with the numbers, that's, we came up with the $12,000 that they'll pay directly to the county each August and this is retroactive back to last August.
Okay.
So do we just need to move to approve this amendment to the agreement? It says First Amendment, though. Do we have to?
It's not a first reading, it's just the First Amendment to the agreement itself.
Okay. I move that we approve the First Amendment to the Management Agreement with Porter County Agriculture Society.
Do we have, do we have a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Okay, we have a voice contract for Key Ledger Accounting Software in the amount of $2,530.
Upper House did this last month. I just, I'm a little slow this year, so. This is the software we use for our accounting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Standard fee waiver schedule for external agencies, American Red Cross and Toys for Tots.
Last month, we did internal agencies, other departments that request to use the facility at no charge. We approved those. There's a couple external agencies that come on an annual basis, a blood drive for the American Red Cross and Toys for Tots. So we wanted to put the external.
Do you just want to itemize those real quickly, what the fee waiver is for both of those? Are they a little bit different for each?
Yeah, I got it right here. American Red Cross was about, I think it was $1,500. Let me see. I apologize, it was, it's $1,300 that we'd be waiving and Toys for Tots is $1,050. Toys for Tots does pay $375 annually. That was something that was worked out before me and we've just continued that with your approval.
I move that we approve the standard fee waiver schedule for the external agencies, American Red Cross and Toys for Tots.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Special one-time request for 50% reduction in room rental fees. The Kiwanis Noon Club, for salute to recruits on May 17th, 2023, a joint Kiwanis Noon Club and Valparaiso Rotary for Veterans Day Program on November 1st, 2023.
So Rotary and Kiwanis both came to me. At the end of December, Old Town closed, which is where those meetings were held, and both have found new locations. But for the larger events, there's not a facility to host them. So they came to me with, to try to get them within their budget for this year because it was unexpected. They're asking for a 50% off room reduction for both of those two events.
And I have to recuse myself because I'm in Rotary for the second one and I don't know if we want to vote each of these individually or.
I'm happy to do them both together. Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Unless you wanted to get it on the record so you're not competing with Kiwanis.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Could you thank the Ag Society for us?
I will, yeah. That was quite a shock when that all came down. I mean, that's a lot to absorb.
Appreciate their help.
Absolutely.
Facilities, Daniel Sullivan. Space needs discussion.
Okay, I asked Daniel to come up. I didn't want to keep Jessica up here for this whole discussion. Actually, moving voters registration and the election department is the linchpin for Daniel to do this other portion. And I just asked him to come and to come at the 10 o'clock meeting so that we can have an update each meeting as to where we are in the whole process. I know at our last meeting, we approved the RFP and I have just asked Daniel, and I don't know if you have some slides that you want to show at all today or if.
Let's see what they look like, Kurt. Maybe give me number one. So actually, let's start with that one. So this is kind of a first layout. That's the east wing, I'm sorry, the west wing of the first floor where voters registration is right now. And if you can see that kind of wavy red, red encircling part there is where they are right now. It's something like 2,000 square feet or something like that, depending on how you measure it, including that little partially triangular section down near the center, center left. So how that translates, next slide, please, Kurt. How we would translate into the next place, I'm sorry, the one before that, number one. That's the, that's the north wing, north slash west wing of 157 Franklin. And this is where I'm saying that it's a considerable increase in the number of square footage that we can use. How we configure that exactly, what you're looking at there, it's actually a drawing from the last project that was done out there. That's why it has the hashing out on there because it wasn't included in the contract. But it does have where the probation offices and such were, so it kind of gives you an idea in those very thin lines of where offices could be laid out. Met with the folks yesterday about how we can exactly do it and put them in there and see how it works. And that's where we came up with an approximate timeline of how we think we can actually have those adjustments done by the July time when we're doing, excuse me, when it's time for the fair and that's a time when their staff works well for them. So that's what we're going to shoot for. I think it's doable. The Xs and Os, Xs and dashes in there are new areas, just a few walls to take down, a few walls to add up, very doable.
Did you want to go on to the first level again and just show the Health Department and where that is?
Yes, that would be number three. So currently, Veteran Services is in A117, A118, A119, right there in the center. Oh, thank you for the pointer you used there, Kurt. And Coroners is in A104 and A103 to the left. And a little bit, they use a little bit of storage in A106, which is now we've moved the extra people from the Health Department into. So initially, plans were with this, this upgrade to the Health Department was to not include those spaces, those would stay there. With this, this is an opportunity to give them those spaces as well and increase, do more for the veteran service folks and the coroner office that need improvement as well. So by doing this, we give the Health Department pretty much the entire east wing. I say pretty much because A116 right there, the large meeting room that we know is 102A, will stay as a meeting room there.
More important, I mean, they're going to have some growth, growth space now, which they haven't had.
Yes, exactly.
Daniel, I'm just wondering, do we maybe want to configure it so that conference room is moved more towards where A117 and A118 is and then we don't have to cut them apart?
Yeah, I think that's a great opportunity because it kind of, it gives some hallway exposure now to that meeting room. If we do that, we can make improvements to that meeting room to make it more useful to county events as well as the public use.
Any other questions? You have any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Jim Polyrk. Receive and open bids for liquid material bituminous bids for chip sale program for 2023.
We received two bids for the liquid bituminous material. And the first one is from the Klink Group.
If you're fine with it, we'll take them back real quick. It'll only take us a couple of minutes to look through them, identify the numbers and then after stormwater is done, we can come back up and give you the results.
The second one is from Asphalt Materials.
Can I just read the names?
Yeah, read the names.
Bitmatt Quality Asphalt Products. And.
You want CD?
Asphalt Materials, Inc.
Just give them to you.
Just wanted to see the names.
Back up for a little while. Thank you.
Thank you. Development and Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson.
Good morning.
Good morning. Got Lockmeadow Group, Amendment Number One for the right-of-way of Porter County Bridge, Number 56, 1050 South, over Pleasant Township Ditch, not to exceed a fee of $309,299.
That's total contract amount. Now, the right-of-way services is the amendment and it's not a large amount at all, but it's just amending the total contract amount. Bridge 56 is on 1050 South, it's just east of Bombs Bridge Road. It's the one we currently have closed because it failed. So this is for amending so we can start doing the right-of-way acquisition for this bridge.
And what is actually the amendment? What are you amending in this?
The right-of-way, right-of-way services are always a separate contract.
Oh, okay.
Or in this case, since we're doing everything local, within that, it's a separate contract with, since this is a local agreement and we're doing everything locally, it's just amendment.
What do you need your, the motion, what do you need to?
Just need a motion to approve.
The, the not to exceed contract is being modified from 292,149 to 309,299 for an increase of 17,150 for right-of-way services. Correct?
Correct, thank you. Correct. Thank you.
Like to make that a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. The Gardens at Loomis Lake LLC Kilmer Minor Subdivision Performance Agreement and Guarantee.
Yeah, this project, minor subdivision, private development, has reached the point in the development, construction of its common infrastructure that they're seeking approval of their secondary plat. What's in front of you this morning is a performance agreement and guarantee that they say they're gonna finish those common improvements. And if not, we've got the financial guarantee that will allow us to order them, complete or have them completed by other means so that those that move into the subdivision are properly served by road and stormwater infrastructure. So staff is recommending approval of this performance agreement, acceptance of the guarantee that accompanies the agreement this morning.
Is this something Scott needed to approve ahead of time?
I reviewed it, yes.
Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Gardens at Loomis Lake LLC Kilmer Minor Subdivision Performance Agreement and Guarantee.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Timberland Farms, Phase Three, request for final acceptance of public infrastructure.
Yes, so in the course of the construction and development of any subdivision, private development, the development proceeds. Public infrastructure, common infrastructure is constructed. The county preliminarily accepts it, those public improvements, if we so choose, if the commissioners so choose. And once that preliminary acceptance takes place, there's a three-year standard maintenance period. Essentially, that three-year period is a guarantee by the developer that everything has been constructed in accordance with the plans and specs, and there's no material defects in the work. Once that three-year period expires, we revisit everything, make sure everything's working properly. Everything's been completed. There are no issues. So that's where Timberland Farms Phase Three is in its development. The developers petitioned that the county, the commissioners, accept the public improvements, in this case, just the roadways serving Timberland Farms Phase Three as public infrastructure, which means that we are now completely on the hook for maintaining, caring for the roads that serve the development.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of the public infrastructure, just the roadway.
Correct. The storm, the sanitary, the water, those are all covered by either Valparaiso City Utilities or the Damon Run, in the case of stormwater, Damon Run Conservancy District.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. The final one here is Plan Commission Resolution, our recommendation to repeal ordinance twenty-eleven solar energy systems.
This is Plan Commission Resolution twenty-three dash zero-two. Plan Commission held a special meeting on the fifth of April of twenty twenty-three and reviewed and held a public hearing on the recommendation that was forwarded by the Board of Commissioners to them on repealing and revising the solar ordinance, ordinance number twenty-dash-eleven. This was recommended by the Plan Commission favorably by an eight-zero vote.
Well, Bob, you know, as you know, you've got a long history here. We don't normally do something like this. I mean, it's not, doesn't happen often at all. Explain to us and the public as to why we felt in this particular instance that there need to be a revision. In other words, did the ordinance that we had, we had, currently have?
I, just report what the Plan Commission Committee, after their meeting, why they recommended to the Plan Commission for this. It's the same question. I do not have that report in front of me, and so I'm gonna have to go through and think of some of the things. One of the, there were, if I remember correctly, five items that the Plan Commission recommended needed to be researched and revised within the, and Stu has them.
Superman.
Thank you, Stu. There were environmental concerns with this, with the environmental concerns. There's two bullet points underneath it. Research on the panel construction for recommendation on specific panels. We've been hearing quite a bit on how panels leak certain chemicals, but there are other panels out there that are solid-state that do not leak. So looking at our ordinance and actually writing in the ordinance what type of panel they have to use. Also, the recommendation on the environmental part to study impacts on wildlife, including migratory birds. The decommissioning agreement, it was reviewed and recommended that there be a bond. For that ordinance does not require a bond, but the bond be renewed on a five-year basis so that way it's reviewed regularly on costs for removals, since these are twenty, twenty-five-year leases that we've been hearing about. Setbacks and landscaping requirements, review the requirements we have for the project as compared to, you know, how they're gonna sit on the local roads, how they're gonna sit next, you know, if they are adjacent to a residential parcel, how these setbacks are gonna look at. So that was part of the recommendation is to review that. Noise, maximum noise level, our ordinance is silent on the noise level, so putting an actual decibel amount on that. Density or site location within the unincorporated areas to residential growth areas and review of soil conditions to determine prime farmland was part of it. And then also a look at putting in a labor agreement so that way there is the use of local labor force with the construction. Those were the bullet points that were brought up by the subcommittee to the Plan Commission and reported.
Sounds like they did your homework.
Yes, it does.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? I thought that we were gonna need a first and second reading on this, Scott, is that?
We are.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because it's a resolution and not an ordinance, so.
Plan Commission always forwards up a resolution. Plan Commission cannot do an ordinance. The commissioners are gonna have to do the ordinance.
We'll close the public portion of this meeting and then open it up to the public. Sorry. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone like to speak in favor of this ordinance, second call? Third and final call, does anybody like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Are there repeal of the ordinance?
Can we just, we had confusion at the Plan Commission. If you are in favor of repealing the ordinance, you are in favor of this resolution. So would anybody like to speak in favor of repealing the ordinance?
Saw a hand back there. Don't be shy. Would you like to speak? Okay. Those, anybody like to speak against this ordinance? Yes, may I come up here, please, and state your name and where you live?
My name is Rachel Connor. I represent Hoosiers for Renewables. I'm the executive director. Our office is in Carmel, and I live in Pendleton, so I'm not a resident, but we do have member advocates in Porter County. And I'm happy to provide names of any advocates at any time for the reference of the board. Our members do ask that the board vote against this ordinance. And we also ask that as you go through this process of revising, that the process be incredibly transparent just so that our membership is able to see when the Plan Commission or subcommittee will be meeting and how they can provide information or testify during the revision process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, second call, anybody like to speak against this ordinance revision? Third and final call, anybody like to speak against this ordinance revision? Close the public portion and open back up here. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Plan Commission Resolution to repeal ordinance twenty-dash-eleven solar energy systems.
And it sounds like the Plan Commission Subcommittee did a lot of work on this and raised some really valid points. Thank you for that, and I will second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Was that motion for just repeal or is repeal and revise?
It was to approve the Plan Commission's.
Resolution for repeal and revise.
To repeal and revise, and it was approved on the first reading.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
And please have the minutes reflect that, Kathy.
Can we also just mention we will have second reading on Thursday at one o'clock, I believe, correct? Yeah.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The O'Rac Shriners of Michigan City, John Miller.
Wait, did we want Jim?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll wait. No, be a good neighbor. Let John go. Come here. Trying to bully you up there, Wes. Hi, John. Onion time.
It is onion time. Our request from the O'Rac Shrine, I'm a member of the O'Rac Shrine itself, but this is actually a joined effort between the O'Rac Shrine and our Porter Local Lodge, one thirty-seven. It's onion sale time again. As you know, we've, you've had, we've been offered the gracious opportunity to sell onions on the corner out here. This year, our lodge is trying to do a very, going to try and experiment. They're gonna sell onions, I'd say sell onions on this corner here, also in front of the courthouse. I guess we're gonna man up and get a big SWAT team of guys to sell onions this year. So.
Yes, to be exact, the request is to sell the onions on the northeast corner of the county administration building along with north side of the courthouse.
North side of the courthouse.
Saturday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, from nine AM to three PM, with a backup rain date of May twentieth.
Yes.
Sounds like a great Mother's Day present.
It is. If you've never had a Vidalia onion, I highly recommend it. I mean, some people eat them like apples, but they are some of the sweetest onions you can possibly get. And the big, the crux of this entire project is this is our primary fundraiser for the O'Rac Shrine. And as you know, the O'Rac Shrine, along with Shriners International, provides a lot of beautiful, wonderful hospitals. This is our big fundraiser.
And what is a bag of onions cost?
Ten-pound bag of onion is ten dollars. You might be able to find.
That's what it's been forever.
I mean, it's been that way for a long time.
The hyperinflation hasn't affected you any?
No, and you bought many of those bags of onions.
Can I put in a pre-order right now?
So yeah, if you'll take orders. Also, if granted this opportunity to do this, if it would be okay, if you wouldn't mind me putting a flyer on the door or maybe somewhere, if that's okay, okay. But yes, we thank you for your past support and just asking for support again this year.
It's a wonderful program. We're glad to do it.
How many years have you been doing this?
I've been doing it before I was a shriner. I was actually kind of a slow at getting my fez. I've been working with them for about eight or nine years, I think it's been at least. I mean, I know it was back when I was recorder I started doing it. I wasn't even a shriner yet, but it's just something I believe in. And you know, and our lodge is very, our local lodge, one thirty-seven, is very active in it. We have a lot of our members that are shriners also, so.
I'll take a couple of bags.
Okay.
And we've got to approve the request to sell Vidalia onions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
I'll come to the portion, is there any other matter which, what?
Okay, what we recommend is going with, we have kind of a split decision here. So the AE ninety S asphalt materials came in lowest at two fifty-two, eight a gallon. But then on the dust stop and the fog seal, bitmatt came in cheapest at two oh five a gallon. So we recommend accepting both bids for those two products.
I move that we approve the recommendation of Jim Poleric of the two low bidders on the, what was it, the bituminous?
Liquid bituminous, AE ninety S, and then dust stop and forest.
Yes, that.
They have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Now that he's done interrupting us, is there any other matter which may properly come before the commissioners? Anybody like to ask us a question? Yes, sir. If you come up and speak, tell us your name and where you live. You don't have to give the house address, just the town or city or.
I don't know exactly where I live.
Yeah.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Gordon Shealy. I live in East Morgan Township, really east, out on six fifty. So we're way out there. Thank you for the opportunity to ask some questions here. First off, I'm not part of any group for or against the Malden Solar Project. My name's not on any petitions for or against. Got very good friends on both sides of this issue, so it's kind of complicated for me. Up until a few months ago, honestly, I really knew nothing about projects that were being proposed in Porter County, specifically Morgan Township. A neighbor said something to me probably three, four months ago that within a mile to a mile and a half of us, there are farmers that have signed up land for solar. Well, we've never been contacted that this was going on out there. So I just started a curiosity going about where this started, how it got going, so on, so forth. So when I Google up, I always call it Google University because that's my information hub. Try to find things out because I'm kind of a self-learner. If you Google up Malden Solar, it says it's a subsidiary of Next Era. Well, being a subsidiary, you can be wholly owned, partially owned. You can be a separate company operating under their name. Who or what is Malden Solar? Is it actually Next Era? And maybe some of these questions, I mean, you don't know. But I'm just trying to research because I cannot find anything on the internet who comprises Malden Solar. I mean, there's no board of directors, there's no employees, there's no, I haven't found anything. So I'm trying to go back to the beginning of this because I said I'm a newbie on this. I'm trying to educate myself on how this project got started and so on, so forth. So I don't know whether you know who Malden Solar actually is or who makes up Malden Solar.
For myself, no, I don't. No, I have no idea. This, this, so Next Era, the subject matter of Next Era is relatively new to us. You know, when they came into the picture, you know, we had heard rumor, you know, a year or two ago that somebody was down there, you know, signing up landowners, but we didn't know who it was. They didn't come and ask us our permission.
Well, I know at the February twenty-seventh meeting, Next Era.
And I'm speaking for myself, by the way.
Okay. Next Era during their presentation, you know, made a point of saying, well, this is only one percent. We're gonna talk of one percent of the farm ground in Porter County or in Morgan Township, I believe, Porter County. Well, then you start finding out, but it's not just, maybe their project is one percent, but you have all these other companies that are out there trying to get the same thing going. So now it's no longer one percent. So when you're proposing your program as one percent, maybe that's yours, but that doesn't give the county a good picture of what's actually going on when it's being proposed throughout the county and throughout the township.
I don't disagree. I think our last count, we have four different solar companies knocking on our door.
Sure.
And just the, the Malden project or Morgan Township project, Commissioner Regnitz had actually created a map showing the total square footage of that, what was projected at that time, and it was actually larger than the town accounts. So it is, I see where you're going with that. It could be much larger than what we think.
Yeah, and that's a concern for, you know, it's spreading throughout the whole township of Porter County.
And honestly, sir, that was one of the reasons we took, we wanted to go back and look at the ordinance because the way that, the way the ordinance is currently written, I mean, we could, we could literally wake up ten years from now and most of our unincorporated area looked like something out of a sci-fi movie.
I'm gonna try and get through this quick because I know everybody wants to go to lunch, so I know what that's like. So most of my questions here are probably, are gonna be from the March fourteenth Commissioners Meeting. Some of them you may have answers, some of them I might. Some of them you may have answers, some of them I might need to contact landowners there specifically. But during that meeting, it was stated that Next Era had committed to a decibel level not to exceed 55 decibels. Well, it's easy to throw out a 55 decibel number. Where's it being measured from? And at one point.
The property lines.
Which property line? The home, the adjacent homeowners?
Where the property line of the home and the field meet, the property line.
Okay, so the adjacent homeowners then, at their property line in the field, that would be 55 decibels?
Correct.
And that is throughout the whole project?
That is what they are alleging, yes.
Okay, so 55 decibels is approximately a conversation, a person-to-person conversation according to the decibel rating chart.
Aye.
So if you were standing at the edge of your property, you would basically be listening to somebody having a conversation at the 55 decibel range?
It would be 55 decibels at the property line.
Okay, okay. There's also talked about that Next Era would put $2 million towards Morgan Township School. Is that Morgan Township School or is that East Porter County School Corporation?
I don't have clarification. I think it's East Porter County School Corporation. I talked to a school board member. Now that, I may have understood that incorrectly, but let's assume that it's not. Maybe it's just for the Morgan Township School.
Okay. Has, does anybody know has Next Era offered any financial compensation to the surrounding homeowners that are going to be affected by this at all, not just to?
Other than for the people that are leasing from?
Yes, not, not, not to.
I don't believe they have.
Okay, okay. During, during that meeting, there was a discussion of the timeline when Next Era started leasing or asking to lease land for the solar project. Did Next Era contact the Board of Commissioners at any time prior to, and this went back to 2019, is I believe when Deb Good stated that Next Era was at her house talking about?
They did not contact me.
Okay. So prior to that, Next Era never came to the Board of Commissioners and told them that they'd like to pursue a project here in Porter County.
Not at that time.
Commissioner Regness was not on the board at that time.
I believe that they started reaching out, I'm speaking for myself again, right around, let's see, 2023, 2022, latter part of 2021, they wanted to meet, and I refused to meet with them.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking, and here again, I'm asking questions because I'm trying to educate myself on this. Deb stated during that meeting that Next Era's attitude had always been the Commissioners first, talk to the Commissioners first before we do anything. But all of a sudden, they're at her house in 2019, talking to landowners about signing up property, and the Commissioners don't know anything about it. So I'm confused as to where we went from the Commissioners being first to the Commissioners not knowing and already being discussions talked about signing up land. I'm just saying, I'm asking questions because I don't know. And I'm not trying to.
If you're asking this board the question, I'll speak, we don't know either.
I'm not trying to create a gotcha moment. I'm trying to ask a question because there's a lot of people that don't want this in their backyards. There's people that do. And I'm not against solar. I think there's a place for it. I hope, to be honest, I hope it doesn't come to my backyard, but I fully respect the landowners for using what resources they have available to, I mean, gosh, how do you turn it down? But I don't believe any one of those families did anything wrong. My problem is with the Next Era process, how it, how it got rolling.
My guess, to venture a guess, is that the ordinance was passed in 2020. And so when they're operating under an ordinance, they probably didn't feel like they needed to personally contact us.
I don't know.
Well.
I don't know when leases were signed. They're all.
Yeah, I don't either, and I'm not.
They're bringing an application to us until very recently.
Well, I guess another question I had was, during that conversation, Commissioner Biggs and Deb were going back and forth about Next Era being around, so on, so forth. And Commissioner Blin, you made a comment about the state was doing their stuff, so we, and we passed this ordinance. Why did the Board all of a sudden decide we needed to pass an ordinance to get this, get this on the books, to allow that?
For the reason you just mentioned. We were under the impression the state was going to pass something that had fewer restrictions than what we were, than what we put forward.
Fewer restrictions, okay, okay. I understand that. That's why I was, I didn't understand why at a local level we would go ahead and do something prior to the state, and I understand.
There are many examples with when the state sometimes preempt the locals, we're a local.
Correct.
So if the state, the issue at that time was, and it was actually a bill, it actually made it through one side of the House, that would have preempted the locals from being able to pass an ordinance to control the development of solar farms. So at that time, the Board of Commissioners put together, had the Planning Department put together a solar ordinance that we would then not be preempted from being able to have the additional requirements at that time.
Okay. So between 2019, when Next Era was at landowners' homes, and March, April of 2020, when the ordinance was passed, the language was written.
Correct.
For the ordinance. Was that language written by the county attorney or was that language, it was standard language in other?
It was, it was co-written by myself and Mr. Thompson.
Okay. Kind of follows along the guidelines of other installations?
We looked at other installations, but we also looked at what the things that we were concerned about when dealing with other semi-like-kind issues like wind turbines and things like that. So that's why we were dealing with native plantings and setbacks and things of those nature.
Okay, okay. During the two, I believe there's over two meetings there was, that ordinance was talked about? And during that time, that was a pandemic time where there were no public meetings like we're having here today?
To clear that up, we never had a meeting that wasn't public. It may have been on Facebook, it may have been on Zoom, but we weren't, even during the pandemic, even the early stages, if we were having a meeting, Commissioners were having a meeting, the public had a way of being present. I'm not saying it was the normal, I'm not saying it was the best, but I keep hearing that repeated. In early 2000, excuse me, 2020, when COVID and COVID lockdowns began to occur, this Board continued to meet. But this Board had to meet in a way in which the public was able to hear, listen, see, and comment. So I can't remember exactly which meeting and exactly what process we were using, but this Board, just because COVID showed up, this Board did not just all of a sudden have meetings by themselves.
Correct.
I just want to clear it up. I know you may not exactly have meant that, but.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, if I'd have kept going, I'd.
To be exact, to be exact, and the records reflect this, the first reading where we approved the ordinance, that was the, that was the same day that the Governor come out and gave an executive order for people to stay in. Same day.
Sure.
The same day, county government, later that afternoon, shut down county government. So we were, we're at the height of this COVID thing at that point, okay? The second reading was done on Zoom. It was not, it was not a public meeting, a public in the sense that it was not in this building.
Correct, okay. That's where I was going with it.
Person.
Yeah, that's where I was going with my statement before.
And the second reading wouldn't have been a public hearing at a public meeting anyway. First reading is the public meeting and hearing. Second reading, as we've done several today, is not, is a public meeting, but not a public hearing.
Okay. I guess one of my concerns, and not that there was anything done wrong, but on an issue like this, with changing an amendment or an ordinance to allow something like this and having it done at a, during a meeting which is restricted because of the COVID and Zoom, did the public really have a fair chance to ask questions or?
The first.
And I know, I know they put it out there, and I know they had the opportunity to watch it on.
And you also need to go back one step.
The public hearing only happens on the first reading, which was done in person here in this chamber.
In, in March.
Before it comes here, just like, just like we are doing the solar ordinance on the repeal and revise, it has to come out of Plan Commission. Plan Commission also had a public meeting before the Commissioners had their public meeting.
Okay.
And the public could comment at both?
At both. They were public meetings and public hearings.
Okay. Let's see here. I think that is just about, just about all I have. Like I say, I was just trying to get myself educated on this and try and understand how we got to this point. And the only way you can understand how you get to this point is if you go back and ask, how did we get to this point?
No, you have very good questions.
Without, I think that's everything I have. I appreciate your time and.
Well, you pay for our time. Thank you for taking the time.
Yeah. I will make one other, one other comment quick is, is big companies, Next Era comes to mind with what's happened. I worked for a very large company for 40 years. And whenever they wanted something, the first thing they did was divide the people. At contract time, they would come into contract negotiations and say, well, we want to give this group of people this, what about the rest of people? Well, that's your problem, you take it up with them. So my, my point to this is, and I don't think Next Era is, to me, this is planned by Next Era to come in and try and divide people and then conquer. And that's been a tactic for years and years and years with big companies. And I hope that everything works out for the landowners that, that signed up for this. And I personally went over and spoke to Mark and Kim, and I told them, I said, I hope that they don't get blamed, which is one of my biggest fears, was that their family and other families don't get blamed for the division within the community that Next Era has caused. I feel that Next Era has caused this. Not, not the individuals that were offered a business deal to diversify their portfolios, you might say. But I wanted to congratulate the gentleman from Next Era at the March 20, or at the February 27th meeting, for that meeting, because that's just what he did as far as I was concerned, was divide a small community that was fairly close before. And it's unfortunate.
The whole purpose of that meeting at the Expo Center was to get a pulse on what the community down there was thinking. I come in as Board Chairman this year, and we have a new Commissioner that come in at the first of the year, and I, you know, Laura can speak for herself, but I think she was in the same position that I was, is that there was a whole lot I didn't know. And I certainly didn't know what the community down there was thinking. And as I stated then, and I'll state now, that's who I work for. I want to know what they're thinking. I don't, you know, Next Era's opinion is secondary to me.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay. Hi, Dawn.
Ready to go eat? I know, it'd be freezing.
I just had a question, Dawn Miller. With the opioids, money, and the ARPA money, are there any plans? I don't think that anybody from Porter Stark is here. Do we know if there's any plans to expand in terms of their bedding? Because there's only 16 beds. And.
You're talking Porter Stark?
Yes.
You'd really have to ask them, Dawn.
No, that's why I'm just addressing this, because I didn't realize they had left. And I was also, you know, wanted to bring up that, you know, they get three to five days in Porter Stark, and then what's the next step? At the city council meeting yesterday, we had Peter Anderson bring up some facts that both the county and the city has got money, and he'd like to see something with a coordinator. And I think that's a really good thing, that he's on the right track.
Just so you know, we've already committed $100,000 for the pro-coordinator that is under the auspices of the sheriff, and he's actually selected somebody for that position. And our little committee is working on a recommendation for the remaining $60,000 for this year. And we're looking at a number of different alternatives for that, okay?
Fantastic. I just think it's wonderful that this is something that we're addressing, because this is something that is really a serious problem, you know, with all the drugs and stuff. And with all the money that, you know, like I said, each town had got and each, well, Porter County had gotten, we could do a lot with that to help with the drug issues.
The Commissioners and the County Council taking it very seriously, taking our time before making a decision, make sure we do the right thing.
I appreciate that.
And as far as the ARPA funds, are they still on the website, the projects? Because they were on the website, so you can review it.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'd have to go, I'd have to go.
I think they still are, but we'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have all my notes. If they're not, I have all the notes. I just think it's fantastic what all you guys are doing with this. I mean, it's wonderful. So thank you to all of you guys and to, you know, the city council, the county council, because it is so important to try to get this under control. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dawn. Any questions from the Commissioners?
No. Can I just talk about what our next meeting? Our next meeting is going to be at 5:30 on April 24th. We're going to have three things on our agenda. We're going to be doing a proclamation in honor and gratitude of the first responders for their work over the weekend of the storms of March 31st, April 1st. We're also going to be doing a launch of our Health and Wellness Initiative that we're going to start within Porter County Government and then hopefully expand out into the community. And then we're also going to be talking about the Willow Creek Extension. So we're going to be alerting that community so that they realize that that's what that meeting is going to be about on that day, okay?
Anything else? Recession. Thank you.